We'll go ahead and call to order, and I will sit in for Weston momentarily. So the meeting is called to order officially at 11:35. And we'll call Sarah Crescent on Don and Catherine.
Good.
Misses Crescent. I will note, Mr. President has.
Yeah.
Right? So to have some. Okay. So did you?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to introduce myself, hand out my card for those of you that haven't met me or have met with me. My name is Lindsay Thane. I'm the Director of the Planning and Community Development Department. Anne Marie is our Senior Planner and will be the Staff Liaison for the Sustainability Committee, which is great because she is also the Staff Liaison for the Planning Commission, which is one of those bodies that your recommendations can be incorporated to. So I wanted to give you guys all a card. If you ever want questions, see some great articles, or something that you think the department should consider, feel free to reach out. Unfortunately, due to workload, I do need to get back to my office, though, so I will let you guys go forward and pick your leaders and learn about what the city has adopted for the Sustainability Committee and look forward to seeing you guys at your next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Good to see you.
Thank you again. Very nice meeting. Momentarily pausing here for the purposes of the recording to give you laptop. Thank you. Move it up. And Weston, I went ahead and called me to order. Check notes on that. And you are?
My name is Weston. I'm an Assistant Planner. I'm going to be the clerk, so I'm just going to take the minutes.
Okay. And there's a link. So moving on down the agenda, I know that the business action items for the election of the Chair and Vice Chair are under item E, which is after presentation, which would be my presentation. But I think that I would rather reverse that and elect the Chair and Vice Chair, and then that individual who's ever chaired, and then lead into the next item, which would be the presentation of the new roles and responsibilities.
It's not really on the agenda, but Tim, we introduce ourselves to each other and tell each other who we are and what we do.
That's, that's very good. I like that thought. Yes. I mean, some of us know each other well, and some of us don't know the other's. That's a very good thought. So Lindsay introduced me, but I'll say just a little bit more, and then I'll let you folks talk. Actually, no, my name is Anne Marie Skinner, Senior Planner. I started here April 1st. I have been in planning for 22 years, and I have about half my experience is in the private sector and half is in the public sector. I've worked for Washington County Organ as Planner and told them Idaho as Planner. So lots of planning experience, working with different committees. Idaho did not have such a thing as sustainability. So I'm very excited about this and being a part of that. And I will now be quiet and let you.
My name is Sarah Hill, and moved here almost exactly three years ago from Beaverton, South Portland area, Washington County. And my husband and I opened up blocks with your house about six months after we, or I guess it was probably about eight months after we moved in too. So that's what we do now. So I'm really passionate about this topic, and I was like, Don, let me know whether it is available for five grand. Really, I got it.
Okay.
My name's Dawn Viasculsa, and I lived here, see, 10 years in April, in our house 10 years ago. Moved here from Salem. I'm married. My husband works in Salem still, hasn't retired yet. I retired about six years ago. And I worked for the state as a Business Analyst for twenty, thirty years, so different agencies. And currently, I volunteer as the President of the local Lincoln City Audubon Society and Membership Coordinator for the Oregon Birding Association. So those are my two primary volunteer, up till now, primary volunteer functions. And mainly through Audubon have we have gotten, especially over the last year, have gotten really serious about conservation issues and sustainability issues and things. Is that right?
So I'm Catherine Chantier-Yale. I've lived in Lincoln City for a little over three years, having moved up here from Mount Chester in Northern California where I lived for 15 years. Lots of open space, lots of conversation going on about what to do with all the open space down there. I have a degree in Computer Science and in Outdoor Education. My volunteer background includes work running the Sierra Club Office in San Diego years ago and work for Project Wildlife, which was a wildlife rehab center. I now have an Oregon State nonprofit called Earthwise Institute in its infancy, and I volunteer for the Lincoln City Cultural Center. And I am very passionate about the sustainability issues of removing plastic, upping the diversity of plant life, getting roofs over everybody's heads, because I have been homeless, and just, you know, getting everybody the harmony thing going a little better. So, yeah. And those are the statistics we talked about.
Well, I must say, I'm feeling a little intimidated by all this experience here, but I'll just try to chip in. So my name is Mitch Gould. I've been here a little bit over a year now. I live over looking Devil's Lake. And I guess I should say, the reason I came there, I don't really have any aesthetic interest in the ocean. It bores me. But I left my beloved home in Portland because I wanted to be near the ocean, because the ocean is going to help keep me more comfortable in the changes that we're going to have ahead. That's why I'm here. I prob, I may not have as much activist experience as the rest of you, but I was a supporter of Neighbors for Clean Air in North Portland, and I witnessed the power of one citizen to stand forward and really make a change, and that was Mary Pivoto, who founded Neighbors for Clean Air. She's kind of a hero of mine. She has been able to get some traction on this very difficult issue of air toxins. After, this year, I joined two organizations that operate out of Newport. One is the Oregon Central Coast Chapter of 350.org, and the other one is the Citizens' Climate Lobby. There's quite an overlap in the small group of activists who are really involved in both groups, and it's good people. I've helped, I've gotten where I helped Sidney Karp run the 350.org blog for us. And I've been to Salem to lobby on House Bill 2020, along with Renew Energy, Renew Oregon. So that's me.
Okay. All right. This should be really a team. Yeah. Would that help? Would you folks think about someone making a nomination for Chair?
It's tough without Dave here. I would nominate Dave.
Yeah.
But I wouldn't do that, or I don't have Dave. I don't have Dave.
You can. Can I? Okay. I know this because Ed Drystock was nominated and voted him as President of the One.
And President.
Dave Price is, he works at the, just Director at the Oregon Coast Community College, the Lincoln City branch. He is President, I believe, or the Rotary Club, and has really focused a lot of their energy for sustainability and environmental issues recently. And I think that's about all I know about Dave, except he's also a very nice guy and a good leader. So do we have a nomination?
It's hard for me to vote for somebody I don't know. I'm not 100% comfortable with that, but.
Well, I'd be glad to nominate Dawn. I mean, because, because of her experience, I think she'd be well-suited if she had any interest. Of course, I, of course, I would also be very, I'd also be very happy with Dave, too, but I would, I'd be glad to nominate Dawn.
Yeah. Well, I think Dave would be great, and you could always, if you didn't want to be vice, if you didn't want him to be Chair.
My only, my own, my biggest concern, or my biggest hesitation is because I've been, I've only been President of the Lincoln City Audubon for a year, and I'm kind of just really getting on and stuff, like, so it feels like it's a 24-hour job right now. So I just, I feel stretched.
Well, let's, let's, Dave, I'd be happy to volunteer for the place, if that's up to you guys, since nobody else seems to feel like they love doing it. But that's, that's, I don't know what that consider, what that exists up here.
Yeah, so actually, yeah, that's a good question. Being Chair or and Vice Chair, what additional responsibilities are there?
Not really that many. Essentially, it's running meetings and coordinating meetings with the staff, but there's really not any outside responsibility.
Are they, are they normally the ones who present to the?
Well, not necessarily. Big presentations to City Council. It just depends on who they're.
Can I add something?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
I would say someone who's going to make it to all the meetings. You know, someone who's got a schedule that can consistently make it to the meetings would also be something. Walk among the chair there more often.
Actually, that's a good point, too, in setting the dates and times for all future meetings. I kind of put out there that Tuesdays, Mondays or Tuesdays would work great. I guess Tuesdays are probably better here, but only because those are the days that my business closes. So I would be more able to make it to all of them than. So I don't know if that's a good idea.
Put us back. Yeah. Well, and would they, can we say we're, we'd love to have him if he, number one, feels
that he can make the meeting, or even wants to take on the extra workload. He sounds a little busy to me, like you do. So.
Mitch, would you have any interest in?
I would.
I could, if, if that's what people wanted. I don't necessarily have, you know, a need to fill that role, but I'd definitely serve if people needed me to.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm kind of like that. I'm kind of like, I'd love to do it. I'd love to have the experience of doing it, because it's been a long time. When I did the Sierra Club Office, and I'm like, part of my, and I was on the Sustainability Committee in Mount Chester, but I haven't done this kind of thing where I'm in a committee doing this, so I'm interested in serving that way, so that I can get a little window of my sales again. So that was part of my motive.
That's good. Yeah, I haven't been on a Sustainability Committee at all, so it's just. And it's mainly, the Chair mainly just runs the meeting, so goes through the agenda items.
You could do that.
Keeps it on track. Also asks for the motions.
I could do that.
I can do that. Well, and Dave could, Dave could do that, too, and I can do it when he's not here, if he's not here. So since you all know Dave, we could say, Dave could be the go-to guy, and I could be the back. And that way, I could get a little practice.
That's good. So we need, we need a motion, is that all right? So one for Chair, we need a motion and a second, and vote.
May I nominate Dave Price for Chair?
Is he really good to Nikki?
Yes.
That was going to say, yes. Boy, I was going to say, there's not that many prices to him.
Yes.
Who's second is that?
I'd like it. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I guess I need to say aye, not raise our hand.
Yeah. Hi.
And a aye. And then we need a motion for Vice Chair.
Catherine.
It's Catherine. Let's, I nominate Catherine.
Should I? I'll second.
Aye.
Sorry, you read the motion?
Mitch.
Mitch.
Okay. Who's to nominate you?
Catherine.
Who's the step again, because she loves the experience.
So that then, taking care of that item of business, most, the rest of the meeting, I just wanted to review the roles and responsibilities, and that's straight out of Title II of the City Code. So, and that is in your packet. So, like I said before the meeting, it's just going to be kind of boring.
I've lived for a while, and it's.
So we'll read the most, we'll go through the most boring part first, and then we'll get to the powers and duties, because that's a little more exciting. And before you start, is this all on the website? It is.
And there's, I don't know if everybody knows, that all of us are out there on the website as committee members, too. So, and so you can do that, and I have a question at the end about protocol, which you may answer as we know so.
Thank you. So just starting at the beginning, this is in Title II, it's in Chapter 2.06, and there's a lot in there that I'm not going to go over, but just for purposes of this meeting, the first subsection of that chapter is personal capability.
Okay.
And yes, you are right there. So a pointed bodies, which is what you are, you're in a pointed body, require uniformed rules, policies, and operating procedures. Generally, for purposes of this chapter, a pointed body means any board, commission, committee. So you're the Committee Sustainability Committee, and nothing herein removes requirement for compliance with more specific regulations and guidelines set forth by state statutes, administrative rule, ordinance, or resolution specific to be pointed body. That's just kind of some legalese saying, if there's state statute that comes about that trumps whatever we have here, that's what we have to follow that. Then it talks about being created or established, recruitment and appointment process. I'm not going to go through all of that, because it's already been created and established, and you all have already been recruited and appointed.
Right.
So that takes us over to packet page eight, which is, and then as we go to 2.06.025, and that talks about quorum.
Oh, I see. Oh, there it is.
Red packet page eight.
I was looking up there.
Yes, it can be confusing. It took me.
Team.
A quorum will, we have to have a quorum, have a meeting. The quorum consists of the, as it says, the first whole number of numbers, more than one half of the total number. So we have five, one half of that is two and a half, so our quorum is three. So today, Dave isn't present, but we have four people, so we're okay. As long as we've got three, we have a meeting, we have a quorum, and we're good. And the members need not be physically present at a meeting if there is another means of attendance. So if you're able to listen in through the Internet, through phone, or something, assume at all.
Zoom is one of the video platforms that.
We could, if it came about that we needed to do that, I can certainly investigate with IT.
Yeah.
And you could assume that, or that's, we could attend that way. So I thought that was an important feature to point out.
But.
If there is no quorum, no official business shall be conducted, and all matters advertised shall automatically be continued to the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Okay.
So that would be, for instance, if we think there's a quorum, but at the last minute, someone has an emergency, so there's three of you sitting here, we would simply say it's all been continued to the next regularly scheduled meeting and excuse ourselves. This is just another item. If an appointed body acting in advisory capacity, which you do, fails to make a recommendation to the City Council within 60 days of referral, the matter shall be forwarded to the Council without a recommendation. So if you're asked, and what that means is, if you're asked to make a recommendation on something specifically by City Council, and within 60 days of that request, you don't make the recommendation, okay, City Council will proceed on that item without your recommendation. Regarding meetings and attendance, unless otherwise provided by law, the number of meetings related to business needs of a pointed body may be set by the body. All members are expected to attend the regularly scheduled meetings, study sessions, and special meetings when required. If a member will be absent, the member must notify the Chair or the Staff Liaison at least two hours prior to the meeting. Unexcused absences can lead to the declaration of a vacancy. Attendance shall be reviewed by the appointed body annually, with reports sent to the City Recorder advising of the need for appointment or reappointment if necessary, based on attendance.
So I, may I ask a question, Mary? You said study, the study group.
Study session.
Study session. So are those things that we will come together and do without public attendance or with public attendance? Is that part of what we're working on a project, or something that we're going to suggest?
Question.
A study session would be likened to a work session that Planning Commission or the City Council has, and they will have work sessions outside of the regularly scheduled meeting. It does have to be scheduled, has to be published, we've got to put it on, on the webpage.
So people can attend and stuff and interest. But this does allow us to actually to work on some of whatever we're working on outside of the meetings.
Only if we specifically schedule it as a study session.
Right, right. I understand that. But I was, my question was, is, how in the world are we going to get everything done with these meetings like this? So I'm happy to hear that you can also schedule study sessions. So that was, I was like, how are we going to do? So thank you. That's just the answer to that question.
But not close sessions.
No. Everything.
Right, right.
Which is completely fine.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's just more about, oh, is that how we're going to do?
Then I'll flip over to packet page 10, where it talks about public meetings and public records laws. All meetings of appointed bodies are subject to strict compliance with public meeting laws of the state organ. Notice of meeting shall be sent to the media group, including the newspaper with general local circulation. Public notice may also be posted on the city's website, which we do. In the case of emergency, or when a state of emergency has been declared, notice appropriate to the circumstance shall be provided, and reasons justifying the lack of 36-hour notice shall be included in the minutes of such meeting. And then the last sentence is just that the city has to retain, within the packets and materials and minutes, in accordance with state law for retention schedule. And then that goes back to the study session, which it is considered a public meeting for the appointed body. So again, the whole, everything has to be published, everything has to be noticed, transparent.
And that's, and on that transparency thing, then, when the meetings are on the website, is it appropriate for us to then share it on things like, there is a Facebook group called Beautiful Lincoln City, and people post things that are going on? Is that appropriate for us to be sharing the announcement of meeting?
Just the announcement of the meeting.
Yeah, just the announcement of the meeting.
Yeah, and certainly saying the meeting is on such and such. Absolutely, because the notice is given to the newspaper.
Correct.
So. Right. You know, we forgot, hearing officer, election of officers, which at the first meeting of the year, a pointed body shall elect officers, including a Chair and a Vice Chair, who shall hold office of the pleasure of the body. We did that, so. Role and time commitment of staff, at least one staff person shall be assigned to work with the body. And the City Manager appoints the Department Head as Staff Liaison, and the Department Head may delegate, which in this case, Lindsay's Department Head, she's delegated to me, and we have Weston as our additional staff member to help us all with agenda and minutes and.
All the fun stuff.
All the fun stuff.
And we are very grateful.
Yeah, takes the burden off of us.
Thank you, thank you.
And then flipping over to packet page 11, on, yes, terms of office are two consecutive years. So is it annual? We do, we do the vote annually, but you can't do more than. Correct, yeah, okay, yeah. So it's an annual term, but it's, okay. Exactly, you got it. The Staff Liaison will be responsible for the agenda of all the meetings, and also taking minutes, as we just said, again, this is stressed a number of times, all meetings shall be noticed in accordance with the Oregon Public Meetings Law. Agendas, minutes, and supporting packets will be posted on the city's website when possible, and staff will email or mail documents to members upon request. The public review copies are available at the appropriate city department, which in this case, is the Planning Department. So if you have friends or individuals who want copies or want to review or have questions, feel free to direct them to me or Weston, and we can get them taken care of.
Okay.
Then it gives a general order of agenda. So the items on the agenda and order is pretty much already set out for us, as you can see here. With roll call, we don't, we won't worry about a pledge of allegiance. Normally, we meet in the Northwest Conference Room. There isn't even a flag in there. A consent agenda, this body usually won't have.
Okay.
A public hearing, we won't, we won't be holding any public hearings, so those likely won't be on there on the agenda. And I modified the agenda slightly. So essentially, we'll have roll calls, we'll have presentations, and then we'll have a special order of business action items, which is where most of our discussion will take place, is under the special order. Reports from city staff, if there are any other city staff members that attend with, or city councilors that would want to provide, present a report. And I know the City Manager, Don Chandler, had indicated to me a week or so ago, he must not have been able to. And I know the city manager, Ron Chandler, had indicated to me a week or so ago, he must not have been able to make it, but he indicated that he wanted to meet with the City Committee at some point to discuss zero waste and what the committee's role would be in that. That is an initiative that city council feels very strongly about, and has directed city manager and other city staff to investigate. So it's likely that that will be one of the very first tasks.
Right. We're all for that. And what is his position?
He's the city manager. And then the last item is if there are comments by you all. So if there are comments or special, well, special reports or anything that aren't included in any agenda item, then there's a slot at the end of the meeting for you to be able to throw out. If you're aware of a volunteer opportunity or a special meeting, then that would be the time.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be the place for that. The powers and duties are set out in chapters two point zero eight through two point seven, and that is where we will now move to. It says two point six six is the Community Sustainability Committee, and that is packet key to what it is.
Oh, I don't have that page.
Not print.
Sorry.
Oh dear, I'm so low. We can all share on page, you can share with her.
Okay.
We'll just have to get...
Get told here, have to get told here.
And it's not very long, so I'm just going to read it, and it's the...
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Wait a second.
Chapter two point six.
Here it is, I've got it here.
It was just, wasn't it?
It was, I just...
The...
Yeah, I had it.
So, now, this is a lot more fun than the part that we just went over. The Community Sustainability Committee is established and shall consist of five voting members, including no less than three members who are current residents of the city, and up to two members who live outside the city above the city urban growth boundary. I believe that everyone lives...
Probably.
Yeah. I am, but I'm looking at houses in Yazu, so that was on my question, was if I buy a house out here, am I going to have to grow up? So is everybody else in the city growth?
Yazu is part of the... You'd want to make sure that it's in the city urban growth boundary. And so I would...
Yazu's in it, for sure.
Is Yazu in the urban growth boundary?
Yeah, I think the holy side of the lake is...
I think so, too.
It wraps around, yeah.
Up to an point. We have the large zoning map. Can I look it up? Can I look it online and see if I can find it? The zoning map is online, but it's hard to read, you really have to pull it up. It's easier just to walk to our office, and we have a big one hanging right on the side of the wall.
Because I'm looking at houses, yes, seeking, and I'm like, okay, I need to know this.
The committee shall also consist of three non-voting ex-officio members, the planning and community development department director or designee, serving as the primary staff liaison, and the secretary of the commission. Powers and duties. The Community Sustainability Committee shall be advisory only, and shall be empowered to study and recommend to the council on the subject of education and promotion of wise and efficient use and conservation of energy and natural resources by the city and all its citizens and visitors. In doing so, the committee shall recommend to the city council the adoption of ordinances, rules, regulations, policies, implementation strategies, and funding, funding's important, related to the community portion of the two thousand seven Lincoln City Sustainability Plan, adopted by resolution two thousand seven dash twenty-nine, and supported in resolutions two thousand seven dash thirty and two thousand seven dash thirty-one.
I have a question.
Yes.
Are those available to us?
They are. I thought, I thought I had included them in the packet, but I see that I did not, so that is an oversight on my part, for which I apologize. I will email those to you, I have them, so I will email, I will email all of those to you.
The resolution and then the supported by...
Okay. And I have all of them, their PDF, so I will email them as soon as, right, the meeting is over. And they will be key, because they do, and I have read through them, and they have goals, so I would suspect that this committee will probably want to reprioritize some of those goals.
Okay, yeah.
And so that could certainly be...
Because two thousand seven is a long time.
Right. Such implementation includes, but is not limited to, promotion of environmentally, socially, and economically improved alternatives for development, operations and maintenance in the Lincoln City community at large, education and awareness of energy and resource conservation issues, green building codes, and green power generation,
Right.
recycling, composting, source reduction, and solid waste landfill reduction issues, which ties right into the city council's initiative for zero waste, electric and water conservation issues, planting of native vegetation, invasive species removal, non-point pollution watershed production, and mass transit, affordable housing, and alternative transportation. So essentially, all the items that I've heard from you in various conversations, I think this really includes all of them.
I think so.
So it's, there's a lot there, and obviously, it's not all going to happen overnight.
Well, except, I guess, well, actually, your problem would be one important that really needs to be added, and that is the climate emergency. I don't see it explicitly listed.
Well, it's kind of covered in these things, so, you know, a lot of that is the native plant planting and the getting the diversity in, because the, as the climate changes, the environment around us needs to change with it.
A lot of this could be subtopics under climate change.
Yeah, they really are. Because it's, you know, and the shifting of the how we're doing power and how we're doing waste, all those things.
Building codes would probably be the one that I see, and maybe the green power, those actually, those would be...
Yeah, those were the many ones that I saw. And like you said, the planting.
And the plant, because the diversity, what I, what I learned when I was in the Sustainability Committee in Mount Chassa, was the, and, you know, the bird counting that just came out. But when I was in Mount Chassa, the forestry people told me that in the last hundred years, the diversity has gone down eighty percent in the Mount Chassa area, and that's open space. So if it's gone down eighty percent there, it's gone down more here. And when you go out walking in the different public areas here, you will see a diversity of maybe twenty species of plants, if we're lucky, and it used to be at least a hundred. So it's by getting the strength of the environment, as we know, is based on its diversity, you know, and so to be getting, and there, something that I'll put on the table that you might want to look up is on YouTube, there's a group called, it's called the Incredible Edible, that was started in England at the beginning of the century, I think. And they, a group of people went in this town and converted everything that was growing into medicinal or edible, everywhere, in front of the police station, the fire department, everywhere, and the town is completely suburbanized. And it's become etour attraction.
I can see that quite a few of these things that we're passionate about, we're going to want to look at the two thousand seven plan, and I actually was significant recommendations, changes. Like you said, emphasizing the climate crisis.
The climate, yeah, the climate crisis. But because weren't they doing the bike, the walking path was one of the main focuses?
Yeah.
And that's been adopted.
Okay.
We have, that was, that work was completed and it was adopted, so yes, that was their, I believe, I wasn't here, so I can't say for certain, but from the research that I've done, it appears that that was their main initiative, and it was committed.
That is what I thought, too.
Councilor Hinton's nodding her head yes, in agreement.
Yeah, I have an important question. There was a mention of something about lobbying the city council, or there was something about that members here should not lobby the city or the city council members, and I wanted to know what that was all about, I didn't understand that part.
Should not lobby?
Yes. Do you know where it is?
Yeah. It was, it had to do with being a public official and lobbying, it wasn't specific to our committee, if I remember right.
Oh, it probably would be on, I imagine it's going to be on page thirteen of the P S.
I thought it was in this.
Oh, wait, no, there's a, no, on page thirteen, it's lobbying.
Is it?
No lobbying, other, no lobbying before other elected by... Oh, that's, well, that's outside of the city.
What this is saying is, as a member of this committee, so you cannot represent yourself as a member of this committee. Members shall only represent the opinion or position of the committee.
Okay, that's understood.
If specifically authorized by the full membership act.
Sure, that makes a lot of sense.
An officially noticed meeting, unless, and, and then it's hard to say, unless specifically directed by the city council to speak the city's official position on something.
I get it.
So you can go, you need to go and speak as an individual.
Okay, yeah, no, I get it.
But not as a representative of the sustainability committee.
Now, I get it, yeah.
For the city.
That implies also if we want to post on Facebook or share that there's a meeting coming up, we do it as ourselves, not as Sustainability Committee would like to invite you to, blah, blah, blah. I think that's the same type of thing.
Because that's representing the committee.
Unless you guys said so. Unless you guys said that was okay.
So you could probably say, like, I'm on Sustainability Committee, and there's a meeting coming up.
Yes, and it's open to the public, we invite you to come to the public.
We think that everyone should, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay. Simply provide the information, and so all similar things, especially with something that's already out there, like a staff.
Yeah, we're not writing in our paper, we're just sharing.
Right, right, okay. So if we've seen some dates every time of the meetings.
Recently, at a city council meeting, where Mr. Chandler had some concerns about a city staff or appointees making comments on Facebook, that were representing the city, and he's like, okay, so who's our official authorized Facebook person? We've got to figure this out.
Oh, great.
You know, so it was part of putting together a communication plan, but still, it was a really good point, because you just get out there and just automatically reply to somebody, and then it's like, oh, wait. Yeah. I'm not sure I have...
Well, I would, it's a different question. So just be careful. Yes, to be careful.
See you.
And, yes, just be careful. And so if you think at all there's going to be any overlap, I would avoid mentioning Sustainability Committee, and if you're a member, and, yeah, if you avoid mentioning it completely, then no harm, no foul.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. So, and that's it. Those are, those are the items listed in chapter two point six six. I would say that perhaps for the next meeting, that I will email you the plan, and that will be the main topic of agenda, is to review the plan.
Yeah.
And then come up with your, probably your number one priority, what you want to deal with first, and secondly, how you want to address city council's request for you to look at zero waste.
That's funny.
And eagerly, that's a little impressive.
Just considering if we were to recommend coming up with a plan that isn't twelve years old. So maybe, so not just taking on a priority, but also recommend a...
Okay.
Of course, that process would take a little while.
It would take a while, but I, but at the very least, we could look through it and on our own, I had a clue.
Yeah.
I think that's most of the...
Yeah.
One of the things that Ann brought up, that's real good, yeah. One of the things Ann brought up, I don't know, I think we were talking, what's the ID issue in the trees, which adversely affects the whole environment, and is starting the trees out, which is part of the climate solution. So, you know, there aren't these kinds of things, and that's one of those things that's been out there, you talked about by Perks and Rec and all these people, and talking about how to get teams together, and so that's, that's one of those.
We do have a sign up sheet at, that's parts of my drop contest, my business, for people to sign up, and so there's a, this coming, on twenty-six, there's a kind of a work party to...
To do ID.
Well, actually, it's not ID, sorry.
It's the trail.
Yeah, it's the trail, yeah. But we kind of talked about ID and stuff like that at one of the LC Green Drakes, and what, like, how to encourage the public to do it while they're out and about, you know, like, having a big, just like metal can or something, and in the trail, you know, hey, just throw some in there if you want.
Yeah, well, nice, yeah, and that's part of, and I did talk to Jeanie about it at Parks and Rec, and that, in Portland, they have groups that go and they, they clear five feet around each tree, but my understanding is what they're not doing is planting something in that space that will compete with the ID, which to me is going to make so that it's not a perpetual cycle, you can actually end the cycle by getting some natives and then that are as tough as I. So that's, that's one of those things. My background says, no, no, let's fix it, don't just keep repeating, you know, that what it's been saying about. So, so, and there are some ways to fix it, so that, but I'm glad to hear that they're doing that. And I've done that quite a bit, where I've gone out and just cleaned trees off and had people in it, pretty easy, actually.
No, it is actually easier than it looks if the ID comes off.
Then you just permit, and then you pull it in, but if we're going to replant, that's one of the things that we need to do.
So last item, we need to set a regular meeting schedule.
Yeah.
It sounded like from the doodle poll and the emails trying to get this meeting set, that Wednesdays were the best day.
Except, Sarah. Tuesday is best for Sarah.
Yeah, for me, Tuesday's probably the best.
Okay.
I'm really any time or whatever, but Wednesdays, you know, if it's this kind of day, it would work okay, but because even on Wednesdays, we get deliveries and stuff, so most of the work, and, you know, my, my whole life, I was in office jobs, and had, and almost had, nowadays, it's three to eleven, you know.
Yeah, Wednesday's your Monday.
Yeah.
You have everything going.
Yeah. So Wednesdays, I mean, I could do it sometimes, but during the summer, I wouldn't be able to break away probably.
Okay, so Wednesdays are good.
I can meet any time that you guys want to, so don't worry about me.
And Tuesdays are fine with me, the cultural center is also closed on Tuesdays, so, so when I'm doing a lot of volunteering, that new type of, go, whoopsie daisies, and...
I will put yourself.
So Tuesdays are fine all year round, because it's...
Tuesday, I think, works for me most of the time.
Okay. And what about you, Tuesday?
Oh, we're fine, Tuesday. We're here all day.
We're here all day.
It doesn't...
It's just another day.
Any specific time, early, late, quarter in the day? Didn't one, you know, didn't one of you have like a yoga class on Tuesdays?
Yeah, I used to do workouts on a block most every day, so I, this was perfect for after two, you know, two thirty or eleven thirty, yeah, the, in between one and two thirty, I'm usually stretching or something. Yeah, the in between one and two thirty, I'm usually stretching or something.
Maybe three could give you time.
Well, it's two fifteen, it's when it's out, so two thirty, three o'clock, either of those. So it's up to you guys, if you'd rather do afternoons or morning, because either one of those is fine. But I am very selfish about exercising.
My day usually functions better in the morning.
Right.
It doesn't mean you have to do it in the morning, so
Eleven thirty would be My first, like I said, I'm not early anymore.
That was fine, yeah.
About eleven thirty.
Like, you wanna check the dates?
Okay.
Well, then we'll check.
Is that paid?
Yeah, we check the date, yeah.
See if he has And are we gonna do this every other week to start out with? Or were we thinking, I would like to
It's still monthly, though, I think.
For official meeting.
Yeah, it's set, it's set right down for once a month.
Oh, that's right, but the study sessions we could set for in between them, if we
As long as we have enough notice.
Well, that's what I mean, notice, I guess.
And what about study sessions, is the city required to be in that?
Yeah.
Oh, so we basically have to live with your availability?
Yes.
Okay.
So should, is the best to set those up? I think, and this is just my, you know, I will throw, I would think upfront, we need to set up some study sessions, because we have a lot of ground to cover to kiss the moment of going.
I think that we need Dave for that, though.
Oh, absolutely. Oh, that's
Comparing.
Right, right.
So what if we intended So let's say, let's just suggest Tuesdays at eleven thirty. And I will check with him on his availability of Tuesdays at eleven thirty. And it sounds like that day is, Tuesdays at eleven thirty is good for all of you. So depending upon if that works with him, then I can just set that as the regular date, and the next one will be whichever Tuesday at eleven thirty. And then at that one, then we can, with Dave, then you can set the schedule for how often you want to meet, because his schedule will drive that.
I'm sure, that's true.
Yeah, I will say that this month, the next two Tuesdays, I'm basing my recs on. I am not usually Well, he had indicated that he was out of, he sent me an email that said he's out of town in the middle of the week for every week in October. Until, I believe, the very last week in October.
Yeah, that's, I was kind of
Maybe the twenty ninth is a possibility. Yeah, I don't think, like, just three weeks from now. And my guess is, I don't know if I can unless we need an assignment.
The homework for the city.
The homework for the city, yeah.
So let's, let's say Tuesday, October twenty ninth, at eleven thirty for the next one. I'm fairly certain, based upon Dave's schedule, that, or based upon his email, not his schedule, that he's at least in town now.
Study session.
Yeah. And that'll be, that'll be a regular meeting.
Oh, a regular.
And then from that point on, we can set a study session.
Oh, okay.
That's what we have.
Oh, okay.
This is where we're going over whether the schedule is on the twenty ninth.
On a Tuesday, I think, or a Wednesday, that sounds good. Tuesday at eleven thirty, October twenty ninth would be the next one. So we're gonna try to figure out what our priorities are, talking about zero waste. We'll go with the first, look at, look at the plan, and kind of plan with you, and then maybe schedule some study sessions.
And I have a question.
Yes.
Half a year ago or so, a friend of mine and I set up on Facebook, a group called Say No to Plastic. So this is just a public group, everybody's sharing a lot of stuff. So what is my question? So if I'm, I guess I don't I just know that if I'm posting things out there, I can post about Sustainability Committee, or even what we're, I guess it'll be, once we're actually working on things, we'll need to know more about what we can talk about in the public. And that, so I, that's, I will bench, or table that question until we have more
Okay.
Yeah. It kind of came floating up in my head a couple of times.
Like that, so the LC Green Drinks meetings that happen once a month, end of that too. We end up talking about a lot of these kinds of stuff. So you guys, so like, basically, we could all be there, as long as we're not talking about stuff that's, you know, directly on our agendas or whatever, but we could all talk about those kinds of issues there, just not as far as like in the city, kind of those
Yeah, where I said it.
Yeah, like, I mean, if we're all just there among a bunch of other people, as long as we're not talking about things that are in our plans or on our agendas, it's fine.
And you don't identify yourself as a member of the Lincoln City Sustainability Committee.
All the agendas are public record as well. I think it's more about not representing the Sustainability Committee and the point of view as an individual, yet talking for the group and the committee and the city as a whole, when it's really just your personal opinion. And I'm sure there's probably some information that, I don't know if in this committee, but some committees like Planning Commission, I mean, there are times where they can't talk about important agenda items, because there may be some, at least in the short term, a privacy issue, or
But we could talk about like zero waste stuff.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's just, it's, it's mostly a matter of, as Weston said, how you're representing yourself. And so if, if you say I'm a member of Sustainability Committee for the city of Lincoln City, and I think
We think, we think.
Yeah.
And even if you say, I think, if you say, I'm a member and I think, it's because you've linked those two things together.
Right.
So just leave the part that I'm
Yeah, leave I'm a member. Leave off the part that you're a member of Sustainability Committee. Because we, yeah, because we have some climate issue meetings coming up, and, you know, there's a variety. Is this where we can all happen to be there and Because we care about these things.
Okay, we're doing a foundation fundraiser thing, and they're gonna show, I think it's called the bag or something like that.
Oh, like, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I've been talking with Jeanie from the search area about what's that all about. So I'm really excited about that, that's my joint venture.
And on the note of the bag, my understanding is that the Lincoln City is gonna be off single-use plastic first of January or the end of January, was what the state dictated, that's what the state
It's the state.
No, but that's, but this, my understanding of the case was they said the state told Lincoln City that they have to be done by.
Well, the state And I'm, I'm not familiar with the, with the state house bill. What the exact one is.
Long time ago, but they're, they're rolling it out city to city.
Newport is, I think it's in Newport.
And they're doing it, they're doing it to the businesses, they're not telling, like, the city council that
No, no, I'm saying to the businesses, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, well, you said they're telling the cities, I thought you meant they were like calling up Ron Chandler and saying
Well, I guess maybe that was my question, is, are they saying to the city, all the stores in your town have to enforce this by this particular time?
I'm not, I'm not familiar enough
That's what McKay's, with set of deadlines, January first of
Thank you.
But it's the first, so
They're not asking the city to enforce that, though, is my understanding. That they're not, but I don't know, just
Yeah, so But it is that date, so I think the stores are, for the most part.
Anyway. Any more topics pertaining to Sustainability?
Yeah, that's why I brought that up, because I wanted to know what the date was.
And the chairman? Twelve thirty-five.